I would like to welcome everybody here tonight. And it is 5:31, and we'll now call this meeting to order. Our first presentation is from Landry Coach and Sultan. And he is on his way. So what we're going to do tonight is we're going to come back to that. And we're going to skip to, and then Mr. Wayne Schuler. He thought our meeting was tomorrow night. So he will be presenting to us on next Tuesday night instead of tonight. So he won't be here either tonight. So we'll skip to our discussion items. And I'm going to turn this over to our town clerk, Ms. Walker.
Good evening, Mayor Council. So what I want to talk to you about tonight was the proposed amendment to the Town of South Congaree, the time of the work session, and the order of proceedings. They fall in the same group of ordinances. But I'm going to talk to the attorney about if we, if there'll be two separate ordinances for, or if we can just do one. On May 9th, Town Council voted to amend the time of the council, the regular council meetings and the council work session. And the council work session was changed to 5:30. We've had quite a bit of confusion about the 5:30. So our staff recommends to amend that ordinance and set the time for the council work session to 6 o'clock, just because every other meeting that we have, including planning and zoning and all of that, is at 6:00. Just to ensure consistency and clarity for the public. And then Title III, Chapter 31, Section 2, the current order for the order of proceedings. So that currently, the order of proceedings are the indication, pledge of allegiance, reading of the minutes, reading of any petitions or communications, report from committees, businesses tabled or not concluded before, new business, introduction of ordinances or resolutions, reports from town officers, miscellaneous business not included in proceedings, public comments, and executive session. It was originally passed in 1985, and it was amended in 2015. The recommended amendment from staff is to reflect the following order of proceedings. Call to Order Determination of a Quorum, Indication Fledge, Announcements and Communications from the Mayor. That's an added item. And we would like to have, establish a consistent and appropriate time for the mayor to share any information regarding upcoming events, community matters, and other official communications. It's, it's, it's a great time to invite people to the community events and things like that. So presentations and recognitions. Presentations and recognitions would be in addition. And it provides an early opportunity for council and staff to honor individuals, organizations, or community achievements without requiring extended attendance later in the meeting. This section would appear in the agenda only as needed. This is what we did for Ms., is it? Yeah, so at the last meeting, we moved every, we moved it up to the front of the meeting so that she could come, be honored, and then she could leave. She didn't have to stay for the entire meeting. This actually is a really good place for it in the agenda. That way, if you have a group, a school recognition, the parade recognition, or anything like that, then they can come and they can be honored, and then they can, they don't have to stay. The request for appearances and citizen comment period. It's positioned, we positioned it earlier in the agenda to allow for public participation prior to consideration of new business items, giving residents the option to depart after their comments, or they can say, but it would appear only as needed. The perfect example of this was at the last meeting where we had people come to talk about the election date. And then we brought the, the vote later in the, later in the evening so that you can actually hear the comments, the public comments before voting on it. And so, because right now, the public comments are at the very end of the meeting. So, um, let's see, unfinished business, well, the approval of minutes, of minutes from the previous meetings, and then council committee reports, if you ever, if you ever have any. Unfinished business. This just replaces the outdated phrasing of business tabled or not concluded before, providing clarity. It's, just shortened it, honestly. And also, having the word, might mean, and having the word tabled in there assumes that you're going to table something almost every once, in my, I mean, in my opinion. So we would have unfinished business, then new business, obviously, and then adjournment. And then I would like to add the language committing executive session at any point following the pledge of allegiance. It affords flexibility for council to address matters requiring confidential discussion, particularly those that require action immediately upon return to open session. These revisions closely reflect, reflect the structure we used during October 10th meeting, which resulted in a more organized and efficient meeting process. Staff therefore respectfully requests council's approval for the formal adoption of the revised order of proceedings at the November 18th regulation. The time and the revised order of proceedings. Do you have any questions?
Explain your positioning of executive session.
Yes, so the executive session is just a statement at the bottom. So at the bottom of the order of proceedings, it would just say, executive session can be added at any point after, after the pledge of allegiance, I think, is what it says.
Okay, but, yeah, okay, but we would do that in advance of the?
Right.
Okay.
I was like, I would want us to.
We're not going to add it during the meeting itself. It would be scheduled on the agenda prior to the meeting.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we would know if we needed executive session.
Basically, basically, we'd do that now.
Yeah.
But the ordinance, the old ordinance puts it at the end.
Well, can I just say too, I've had a couple people reach out to me and request that the executive session be at the end, just like at our last meeting, it wasn't. And it just makes it difficult, you know, to want to stay for the whole meeting, and then when you have an executive session with four other items, I wouldn't want to hang out.
Yeah.
I mean, I have done that before in other meetings, but.
Sometimes it's necessary if you have a vote that you have to discuss ahead of time.
Yeah.
It's, it's not wonderful for everybody that's here. It's not, especially when you have to send them out.
Right.
And it doesn't necessarily have to be anywhere else in the agenda. It can be at the end. This just, this statement just gives you the opportunity to move it if you need to.
And maybe if we did have to do that, you know, again, maybe we can make it really short, like if we're going to vote on something and we just have one item in that executive session, and then have another executive session at the end so that folks will know we're not going to be 30, 45 minutes. Does that make sense? Can we, can we do it, can we put it on there twice?
They're just giving us the flexibility by removing it in a certain order. Is that why?
Yes, that also gives you the ability to change the ordinance order without having to come back and amend your ordinance every time you need to do that. And there will be certain circumstances where people need to have executive session before the end of the meeting.
Yeah.
And I'll give you a prime example, if we're ever in a state of emergency or anything like we've had in the past with, you know, with code or with anything like that, you don't want to wait until the end of the meeting to go into executive session to make a decision that would affect your meeting. So that gives you the flexibility to move it as you need, but you don't have to move it if there's not a need.
Okay. And I would say, put that in the ordinance, does it, to explain it for future boards. Like if none of us are around for a future, that they would understand it. Because a lot of our ordinances are very confusing as it is.
I've heard that too.
Yeah. And they're, if there's an explanation for things within the ordinance, I think it would help to know that that can be executive session, which you said. But this makes it sound like we would just adjourn the executive session without explaining, having it on the agenda. So maybe add in there, the executive session portion of the agenda can be moved where needed.
We can certainly.
That's what it says.
Yeah.
It says at any point following the pledge of allegiance.
I know, but it makes it sa, okay, yeah. But it makes it almost sound like, hey, let's go to executive session. Maybe say it on the agenda, or say, I get what it's saying here, but when I first read that, I thought, oh, we can just like, let's go have an executive session.
No, that's not what it means.
I know, and we know it doesn't, because we know what we're doing. But what if there was a new board, and we need a council, and they didn't? We can start from work.
We'll make sure it's clarified.
Yeah, it's really clear, yeah.
There's a place that you can.
Because I had the same question you were.
Make sure, yeah.
We can certainly make sure that's covered by. You have any other recommendations or comments? And I will keep in mind when we do the agenda from now on, if you have something that you need to vote on, or multiple items that need to be going into executive session that we did, one that needs to vote, and then come back in, and then if you want, we can do later in the evening, the final.
Because I think most of the time, we know if we've got to have a vote about something after discussion of executive session.
Right, as we have a meeting.
Yeah.
Does, do you have any more questions or anything? No? Well, thank you very much.
Next on our agenda, we have proposed ordinances pertaining to code enforcement. And we are so lucky to have you with us here tonight, Ms. Hamilton. We don't see you, we don't ever see you.
Is everybody doing good?
You more?
That's good, alright.
Just the terminology.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is it, is yours?
I think this is not hot either.
No, just talk loud. No, but talk really loud. Well, there you go, there it goes. You got it working.
Alright. I hope everybody's doing good tonight. I definitely would like to propose adding the International Property Maintenance Code to what we do here at the Town of South Congaree. I think it is extremely important to do so. I think we kind of mentioned a few minutes ago, some of the ordinances that we have here are a little confusing. I think with adding the International Property Maintenance Code to what we do here, it kind of simplifies the exact code that we need to enforce. Some of the ordinances that we have on the books are, to put it in a nice way, it doesn't fit what the violation is. It is very broad and very vague. But let's take for instance, well, I don't want to say the code, but it's a code that I use a lot. And it's about, it's pertaining to structures. And some of the structures do not need to be demolished, and are not in severe disrepair, but they need to be addressed. And with what I, if, how I enforce those ordinances that I use, the International Property Maintenance Code would address it perfectly. It fits. Take for instance, protective treatment. You know, if someone has some rotten wood, probably needs to be painted, some damaged fascia, cornice, broken windows, protective treatment is, is amazing. And it addresses those specific problems. I would hate to get a letter in the mail and just say demolish or remove the structure. But the International Property Maintenance Code 3 or 4.2, protective treatment addresses that on a minimal but specific level. Also, I mean, just kind of detailed codes, foundation laws. You can have rotten, damaged wood on the outside of walls. I'm sorry, the foundation, you know, the foundation may have some damage, where it's missing bricks, where it's missing wood. And the exterior walls could have rotten wood on the property. You know, you may have some roof damage. All of these codes are found in the International Property Maintenance Book, and it addresses those specific codes. Windows, guy like door frames is another code. It addresses the broken windows. We see a lot of broken windows around the town. Not really skylights or door frames, but the windows will be addressed by that, by this specific code. So the International Property Maintenance Code, I think would be an asset to the town in, in those, you know, instances and a lot of other instances. It is more specific to, to the structures throughout the town. And I would also like to talk a little bit about, we have a possible door hanger that we may use. So if I go to a property and, you know, knock on the door, trying to get the homeowner, you know, talk to the homeowner about whatever issues that they may have on the property, if they're not there, we can hang that door hanger. I can check a box, write a note. And, you know, those ordinances are addressed already through what we have in the town's code, but the Property Maintenance Code also addressed those as well. Yeah, that's pretty all I have.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Let's, and I work a lot in real estate with door hangers.
Right.
So in a lot, through election, and like today, if you put a door hanger, that might not go out my front door seam. And, or the wind would blow it. That, they're not, that's not their first notice.
Right.
Okay.
It's not, it's not their first notice.
Right, okay. So some of this list, I'd kind of like to go over, because when we talk about broken windows, a lot of people have a double pain. I sell houses with cracks in windows all the time.
Right.
And they even get financing. But are you meaning like the windows busted out? Because I mean.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I mean, a lot of this is really, really good, and I do appreciate that. But some of the stuff like foliage, foliage encompasses plants too. So I think we need to define that a little better, because vines are flower, are state flower vines, and some people like to vine, like have a terrace and vine it or plant, you know, that kind of thing. And I, I know what you're trying to say, but I'm saying, like, how extreme are we going to get with, I mean, I've got weeds in my flower beds right now, and I wish I could get to them, but I, I can't.
Well, the code that IPMC does have room for cultivated gardens.
Okay. That's what I wanted to know.
Yeah, it's, you know, it's okay to have a cultivated garden, but let's cut your weeds. Let's cut your grass.
So what about natural areas like, that have always stayed natural? Like if somebody didn't develop their yard when they, they kind of wanted to have some block, not be seen, you know, they're off the beaten path, or, you know, I know I have a neighbor down there, he can hardly see their house, but, and I understand why we want to clear some of that too. But what about people that want to leave their field? Like there's a big piece of property over that goes from Sunset to Colonial to Shumpert, and it's green. We're not making people cut their vines or weeds or?
No, that's, that's.
Okay, that's just natural.
That's a natural area.
Okay, that's kind of what I wanted to know. And then upholstered furniture, you mean like indoor furniture that they just kind of set their couch on the front porch?
Right, and that's already, that's already a, a town code.
Right, it's not like, you know, because they upholster outdoor now, really nice.
If you move with, if you move with living room sit on the outside.
And I have seen that on somebody's.
Yeah, that's, that's, but that's already on the books here.
Right.
That's not addressing the IPMC.
Okay.
But on the door hanger it is.
Right. And so the other one that I had a huge question about is the roll cards, because I know this has got brought up before, but some people need to pull, put their road, their card out. They might go work at different hours, so they got to put it out on Friday, Thursday night. Like I put mine out on Thursday night. But, because I never know when they're coming in the morning, so I don't want to pull it in the morning, or I have to leave early and didn't do it. Of course, mine, usually it's one in the morning before I pull it out. But I know that there's a lady down the street, and she cannot push her roll card out. She's down Sunset on the other side. And they, so they come up to her, she leaves her thing at the front door, or near her front garage, and they get it out for her.
Right.
So what are we going to do about the elderly people that, one, can't take their, you know, they can't hide their roll card? They don't have anywhere, they got a chain link fence, and, you know, mine's in the backyard, not a privacy fence, but you don't want to put that in an enclosed structure because of rats and, you know, that kind of thing. I used to keep mine in my storage room in my garage, and it, it caused rats, and now I leave it on the outside, and I didn't know, so.
It appears that that company has, you know, is working with that lady.
Yeah.
The elderly lady. So if, if anyone has, you know, issues with the health, or can't walk, or whatever the situation is, I, I assume if they call that company, then they'll.
They are very good, yeah.
I'm going to enforce within reason.
Yeah.
If it's an 80-year-old lady that can hardly walk, I'll move it for her. But if it's, you know, any other.
So someone needs to build a structure to put them in?
No, as long as it's out of public view. I mean, it can, yeah, it, it has to be out of public view, but it's all enforced within reason. And of course, if you get a complaint, then you definitely have to address it. But like I said, if we're speaking on someone that's elderly and can't do it, then, I mean, honestly, I would try and help that person. But if it's, you know, a younger person who's just being lazy and don't want to do it, then I would have to, I have to address it in another way.
But do we give people enough time? For me, I would need more than, I may not get home till late that night. And I don't want to be out there late at night trying to pull my carts. I mean.
Right.
You, you should see what drop, walks down my dr, my sidewalk every night.
Right.
Right now, I don't want to be out coming to my house at night, long term. I don't even like pulling my, pulling them out at night anymore.
I understand.
But I just want to know if there's some leniency, because the couple on the side was moving to the country, and when I asked them, why are y'all leaving? And they said that they kept getting notes from their landlord to pull their, their trash in, their carts in, and they said, you know, we were, and they are, their yard is meticulous. They kept their yard up very nice, and they, I never, other than the day of, ever saw their carts out much. But I'm just saying, is there some leeway we can give working people like myself that, you know, or, or, and elderly?
So I'll, I'll take a look at it on a, you know, case by case basis. And then, you know, possibly work with them, possibly, you know, have some type of suggestion. You know, let's do this or that. Yeah, it's all within reason.
And, and I hear what you're saying, but I do know, like, on the sidewalks, I've seen trash cans sit out on the sidewalk for the whole week.
Right. And I agree, that shouldn't be. But I'm looking.
So I get what you're saying about pulling it off the curb.
In a situation like that.
Where it's a repeat of this.
100%.
And even on Ramblin', I mean, they've been like in the road. So you got, or, Ramblin' is so.
We need to talk to them about leaving them there, because I go to work.
That's what this is for, right?
No, no, I'm talking about the trash people. When they toss them, them not putting them back into the yard and leaving them there, because I'm sure.
Then, then Ms. Paul MacKinnon called them.
Yeah, we need to talk.
Trash people at some point, right? Make that, you know.
Yeah, let's talk to them, because if you're at work and they toss it. The other thing that I wanted to bring up too is, some of this stuff, I'm concerned that somebody's income level won't afford them to build a structure for their, to hide their, and I know we do it for business.
Does it say you have to have a structure?
No, you don't have to have.
Well, I'm talking about to keep it out of public view. If it's in your backyard, you got a chain link fence.
Yeah.
It's in public view.
You made effort to, you know, to put it in the location.
Right, yeah.
And, and I mean.
So you're okay if it's in the backyard, even if it's a chain link fence?
If it's not on, in the front yard, if it's not on the curb, and they took the effort to put it to the back, you know, to the back of the house by the door, anyone.
Okay, okay, so maybe we could tweet that and say not at the road. And the other thing, and I get your whole thing with the pet waste from the yard and prevent foul odor, odors, I love that. I wish, I wish HOAs have that to a degree, because I have went to sell properties, and there, there's so much dog waste, but I know they don't regulate that. So I'm worried about the regulation of that, because one is, I have no pets, but four cats use my yard, is where they're going to use the bathroom. Deer have come up in my yard, and I watch people walk their dogs and let them use my lawn. And so I'm not picking up another animal when I don't have any animals waste, like, it's going to sit there, you know? So I'm saying, can we specialize, like how extreme are we talking? We talking about they got 10 dogs in the backyard and that kind of thing? Or what about cows and animals?
Unfortunately, you know, someone, you know, is walking their dog, and, you know, they do their business in the, in the front yard.
Yeah.
You know, and this is, it, this is sounding pretty bad. It's a lot, you know, me, as, you as a homeowner, unfortunately, is your responsibility, but I, I don't, I mean, this is not something that's enforced, enforced often, but it definitely can be addressed. I would assume I would enforce that on a complaint where it is multiple animals, multiple dogs, or whatever in the yard. You know, it's probably not going to be, you know, a passerby, or, you know, a couple of cats, but maybe if someone has what we call a dog yard.
Okay.
Where you got multiple animals, and it's feces, dog feces.
Right, okay. Do we not have another, I can't even talk. Do we not have an ordinance that would manage dog walking? And the folks have to have the bags to pick it up and remove it as they're going, and the dogs on the leash? I know that's county.
I was, I was just about to say, from what I read, what I read in the ordinance, Lexington County addresses, you know, you know, animal control type stuff. So that would probably be something they would address, I mean.
They don't address cats. So one thing is, cats are considered allowed to roam wherever, trust me, they're, and they, for some reason, decide to house them in the place of the person who's most allergic to them. But the other thing about walking a dog, it's great to have an ordinance, but I don't know how we would regu, like how we would manage, I mean, I don't want to call you, go, okay, we're walking their dog.
A officer would, could do the very same thing when they're out of patrol.
Yeah.
I mean, how does Alpam's do it, or Mount Pleasant? I mean, they.
Well, they're walking them all at the arena, like.
I can, I can imagine.
Do they have dog bags over there?
Oh, they're not picking it up. I did see one lady, she had both her dogs on a leash, and she had a bag, but most people don't have a bag.
But if.
Or on a leash.
I mean, that's something we could begin to talk about and bring, you know, citizen awareness, that you don't want it in your yard, so you make sure that you manage when you walk in with your cat, whatever kind of pet it is, yeah.
And this is stormwater issue too. They're very, they're very.
100%.
We could, you know, to help with that, sort of.
If you have cats.
Help you put out, you know, a website, just as reminders or something.
And, oh, that's true.
Yeah, that, I think that would be good, so people know in advance. And then I'm, I'm not going to take up any more time with this, but, and I know it's case by case for, for any of this. And I think this is more like people, I know we have to maintain our properties, but we, we need to realize that some of these people are barely getting by, we've, we've got to have some kind of backup to help some people that, you know, I mean, we've left our building unattended with fascia everywhere. I'm saying like, you know, rather, what's the fine if they can't paint their fascia?
It'd be $10.87.
Okay.
Right.
Yeah.
And I agree.
I've been a single mom. I'm going to get out there, and I'm going to put a ladder up there, and I'm going to paint it if I can't afford to paint it. But I remember having to get a very large ladder I should not have been on and paint mine, because of, you know, pride of ownership. And I'm, and I, listen, I love this, because I'm a real estate agent. Pride of ownership increases values, I'm all about that. But I think we need to develop some assistance for some people that, you know, one, they couldn't pay the thousand. one, they couldn't pay the thousand, but they couldn't pay someone to paint, and they can't paint. And I get it, I do, but I would love to see us get a group together that we would identify those people, and then maybe even get the churches to come in to assist that person.
Yes, it's organizations that...
Right, right, just, and I'm, like, I am all for making things look pretty. I am. But I just want to make sure that we have some kind of help for people that, for instance, I just took down two trees in my backyard. They weren't dead, but they were annoying my neighbors, so I had them cut down, and it cost me $3,000. And so I'm saying, like, what would they do if they didn't have the money to have those trees removed?
I get it, but that's the...
I mean, that's...
As the homeowner, unfortunately, I said it already, but as the homeowner, they're responsible.
Yeah, I agree, but...
The town can work with them, we can definitely work with them and give them time. But ultimately, it's up to that owner, unfortunately. You know, in some cases, some, some, I mean, that's, that's a lot of money for a lot of people.
Yeah, my next of neighbor needs a lot of help, but...
Right.
I, I, I'm done, I'm done. I've cut all I can for her, and she's very sweet, and she has heart issues.
I have another question, please.
Yes.
When you reference the IPMC book, would all the ordinances or all of the laws in that book, guidelines in that book, would they be published in our ordinances? Or would the reference to that book be listed in the ordinance?
It should be referenced to. It's going to be the book. Yeah, so, I mean...
I mean, is there, I'm just like, it has here with section 302 or 304. Would the sections themselves be listed as the reference in the ordinances so that individuals would know to go to that ordinance or that place in the IPMC book to find what you're referencing?
Yes, so if, if I was to write a notice of violation?
Uh-huh.
Right, so I would put the ordinance, I mean, and I can, I can definitely put the title of the ordinance so they can see. But when I issue my notice of violation, you know, whether I use the state statue or the Town Ordinance, it's on that notice of violation for them to look into. But yes, ma'am.
Okay. But I didn't have extensive this, this book is.
Right.
Would it be very expensive for us to have that in our ordinances to? Because it'd be pages of stuff, I'm sure, to post. Yeah, I just have to look at it.
Yeah, it's like a landscape, but it's a lot of...
And I'm glad that we're doing this, because I have been told for several years that we needed to have this in our ordinances, so thank you for this.
Yes, ma'am.
And I just have one question, and you are already certified.
Yeah, I'm certified in this, yes, ma'am, so I can enforce this very kindly, yes, ma'am.
I know you have to be certified to enforce that.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all I have. Any questions? Good, thank you.
So we now will go back to the top of our agenda, and I think we have Mr. Stuart Jones with us tonight, who is going to present to us. Welcome, good to see you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, other members of council. My name is Stuart Jones. Most recently, I was the building official for the City of Casey. I decided to retire September 30th after almost 36 years of public service full-time. I had started my own company, Congaree Co. Consulting LLC, and providing building co services, inspection services, and floodplain consulting services to smaller jurisdictions that do not have full-time staff for those projects, for those areas. In the past, I've worked also at the City of Westphalia as a building official, where I worked with Ms. Baltmeyer and Ms. Reichen, who I've known for quite a number of years. I'm just getting started with this, but I've already got a contract with the Town of Springfield to do their inspections, their building code consulting, and things like that. I'm looking to gauge the interest with the Town of South Congaree in providing the same services here for the town. I sense some information, I'm sure y'all have that in front of you. I have several ICC certifications that I've obtained over the years. I'm also certified floodplain manager, and I have, like I said, 35 plus years' experience doing this. Not real good at public speaking, so y'all bear with me.
You're amongst friends.
Right.
I'm all, dual personal background. I am local, I grew up in Lexington, Westphalia area. I graduated from Brooklyn Casey High School in 1985. I attended the University of South Carolina, but that didn't quite work out. So I decided, after trying to find my way for a couple of years, to land with the City of Columbia where I started in 1989. Worked there until 2005, left there with Westphalia, worked there from 2005 to 2019. And I've been in the City of Casey since 2019 to September 30th. I understand that y'all currently are contracting or using Lexington County to provide your building inspections and your permitting. By bringing someone in here to provide consulting and those services, you'd be able to bring your permitting back in-house and be able to collect that revenue and keep it in the town. There wouldn't be anything going to Lexington County. I also have a good working relationship with the Lexington County Fire Marshal's Office, having dealt with them for the last 20 years. Basically, in some shape or form, I have a good working relationship with several of those gentlemen over there. And I believe they provide the fire code services over here for the Town of South Congaree. Basically, that's it in a nutshell. I did include on the information that if you, if you were to decide to take me on for those services, it could be done one of two ways. It could be done either as a monthly retainer or a monthly fee, which would include all plan review fees, all permit review, all permit application review fees, and the building inspections that would need to be done, commercial or residential. Or you could do it on a per-inspection basis for the building inspections, plan reviews, or the permit application reviews. Like I said, I am currently contracted with Springfield, and I do that on a monthly fee. They pay you a monthly fee, I provide all those services to them whenever they need it. Right now, it's pretty much daily. I don't know how much construction South Congaree has going on right now. I figured most of it's probably going to be renovations, repairs, those type of things. It's most of your residential, most of your residential areas here are established. You don't have any new subdivisions at this time. I know you do have a commercial corridor, and I'm sure some renovations, things going on there, off and on about how busy y'all are here. If you were to decide to go or to go with me on providing these services, anything that the county would be doing or has been permitting at this point would have to be continued and finalized by the county. And then whenever we would start with the contract with Congaree Co. Consulting, that would be when I would start doing the permitting or looking at the permits and doing inspections for the town. Does anybody have any other questions that I might can answer? Well, appreciate y'all having me tonight, and I look forward to possibly talking with you, hearing from you, and if I can do anything for you, please don't hesitate, let me know.
What, what question? A consistent fee, I know, I know this would be established further in conversation.
Right.
Okay. And then the per-inspection, the same, right, okay.
That, that would need to be discussed.
Right, okay.
I know in the past that there were, there was an individual in the past that was doing inspections for the town, and I believe that was on a per-inspection basis, if I remember correctly. A situation came up, he was not allowed to continue to do that. And I believe that's when you went to, pardon me, went to Lexington. Oh, Sayville.
Sayville was on it for...
Sayville was, who knows?
But I meant, they were on it for what he saw.
And that, yeah, that was individual, yeah.
They, love to hear, love to talk to y'all about it. I'd love to see about providing that service for you, for the town. And if you have any questions, please don't hesitate to reach out to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank y'all for having me tonight.
Thank you. Good to meet you.
I have a question for Ms. Baltmeyer, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Can we find out how many inspections, how many permits Lexington County does?
Already have it up.
And a cost, so we can do a cost analysis between that...
And you get that information on the website.
See if we're saving any, making any...
Having, open up.
Well, I believe that's all we have on our agenda. Does anybody have anything else that they would like to say? I know tomorrow is Veterans Day. I don't know if we have any veterans out there, thank y'all, if you are.
Today's Marine Corps Day.
Today is Marine Corps Day.
That's right.
I've got some pictures, yeah, yeah. So happy that... Everybody have a good day tomorrow, so I guess that's all we have.
Town Hall is closed tomorrow.
Town Hall's closed tomorrow. I think it is...
I have to work too.
Meeting adjourned.